I'd like to call our regular district two twenty eight, regular board meeting to order. Can I get roll call please? Here. Miss Lutz, here. Miss Motley, here. Miss Stern, here.
Okay.
Mr. Wickham?
Here.
Here, please stand for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three point one, can I get a motion to approve the March eighteenth, twenty twenty five regular and closed meeting minutes?
A small move.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Miss Motley, any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Miss Lott?
Aye.
Miss Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty five committee, the full and closed meeting minutes? A small move. Second. Moved by Miss Gleason, second by Miss Motley, any discussion?
Just a note on the closed meeting minutes, the need to be modified to reflect Mr. Towner's attendance under guest, other than that's fine.
Any other discussion? Roll call please. Uh, Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bliss?
Aye.
Miss Lott?
Aye.
Miss Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler? Upstayed. Moving on to our superintendent report.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Well, I'd like to start out with a, uh, a, uh, thank you, a, a big thank you to Ms. Ms. Debbie Sterns, uh, for her service at District Two Twenty Eight, as this is her last regular board meeting before reorganization on the twenty ninth. And, uh, just doing a little research on her years of service, I want to commend her for, uh, being a board member since July of two thousand and six. So we're closing in on nineteen years of, of service for the community and, uh, and it's greatly appreciated. Over that time, as you might imagine, she served on multiple committees, personnel, policy, student services, labor and management. And in addition, uh, in her role as a board, she's served as president, uh, two different stints from two thousand and seven to twenty thirteen and from twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen. And, uh, we just want to wish her well as, uh, as she transitions here. And we did get you a little something, uh, token of appreciation, which I don't want to break. So I will try to hand the letter over really nicely to you. And on, on, on behalf of the entire district, community staff and students, uh, thank you for your years of, uh, service to the board.
Thank you. Everybody knows I play so much second.
Okay, uh, thank you. Moving on, uh, just want to revisit the legislative update, give you an idea of, uh, the legislative session halfway through the spring legislative session, uh, heading towards, uh, you know, the term in May. And, uh, just to give you kind of a highlight, the, uh, legislature imposed even a five bill priority rule, only allowing legislators to prioritize their top five bills because of the sheer volume. Give you an idea what that was like, the Senate had brought forty-five bills and then in that last, uh, period, uh, advanced another hundred and sixty. The House moved three hundred and seventy-eight bills, so, you know, part of what we're tracking is over five hundred bills. And trying to pull out the ones that not only have a little bit of traction, but also impact our schools is going to be my goal, uh, over the next few months. So I mentioned a few of those bills at the committee and to just give you some updates to keep the board up to date on the progress. The House Bill twenty-nine seventy, the Notice to Remedy Bill, which allows teachers to grieve, the Notice to Remedy, it's an IEA initiative that did pass and will move into the second chamber, uh, going to the Senate. Uh, House Bill four seventy-three, that was the bill we discussed where the IHSA was looking at a two-time allowable transfer for students to transfer from school to school and still compete. That did not move, it was reassigned or referred to the Rules Committee. However, one that popped up, uh, along those same lines was House Bill thirty thirty-seven, which is the Right to Play Act. And this, uh, will be moving to, to the Senate, past the House. It allows a high school student to petition the principal and athletic director and, uh, be allowed to compete both for their high school and their club sport. So you can tell that there's, you know, discussion on both sides there. There's, uh, some limitations in the amendment that again requires the petition to get passed through the, the school. But it puts both club and high school coaches in, in kind of tough spots. So we'll have to monitor the progress of that as it goes through, uh, the next phase, but that is one that did pass the House. The cell phone device ban, Senate Bill four twenty-four twenty-seven also passed and will move now to the House. That was the, uh, legislation we discussed that was started by the governor's office and, uh, has a lot of support. And I think, as we mentioned, just to revisit, won't change much about our daily practice. We're virtually in that, uh, situation now, not allowing phones during construction time. Senate Bill fifteen nineteen also advanced, that was the bill for ticketing students, uh, for offenses that would be taking place in the schools. And, uh, again, uh, to reiterate what we discussed last week, we're pretty much already using that as a process and a procedure that we're not, uh, doing that, so I don't think that'll affect as much. But I wanted to keep you up to date that it didn't move forward. And then lastly, uh, was House Bill twelve thirty-seven, that's the mascot bill of which Bremen does fall under, uh, in terms of, uh, one of the names that they have listed for the Braves. And that also advanced and will go into the Senate. There's, if you're following that story or that bill, there is a lot of articles being written, especially coming out of the Rockford area for some strong opposition, but, oh, there's opinions obviously on both sides, uh, continue to track and monitor. But that did, uh, clear the first hurdle and is moving to the second chamber now. So, um, as things develop, I'll, I'll try to do a good job of picking the ones that I think are most pertinent and, uh, impactful to us and keep you up to date. If there's something that you hear about as a board and you'd like some more info, just shoot me an email, give me a call and I'll make sure to put it in the report and do some work on it. Okay, third item is, uh, we currently use Board Docs as our platform for our board meetings. That, uh, company is owned by diligence. They are basically sunsetting Board Docs and moving to community. So it's a platform that I just wanted to make you aware of. You will most likely hear from, uh, our very own Tiffany Taylor here in May or June, what that process might look like. If we include a training, we think it will be fairly seamless, but it's, uh, it's a program that they are sunsetting and moving towards. So expect some change there, but training will come along with it. And I think, uh, from what Tiffany has been able to ascertain so far, it's a pretty user-friendly, so we'll, uh, preview that soon. And then last, uh, tomorrow, all of our juniors across the whole district are taking the ACT test, so I want to wish the students well. They get a good night's sleep and, uh, rest up for the, uh, the big test. This is the first time since we've switched, the state, remember, has used the SAT over the last, uh, few cycles. And, uh, the new contract is with ACT, which we have prior experience with, but it's taken some adjustment. We're hoping that, uh, the juniors do well, show off a little bit and, uh, we'll get through the testing date, uh, tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Hello.
All right, moving on to item three point two, the superintendent's cabinet.
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Board members, I'm going to update you tonight on two areas, um, the first one being the challenge curriculum. As we continue to educate students and staff about the various components of the challenge curriculum, we continue to see a rise in the number of students earning college and career-ready indicators. As a reminder, in this area, we're looking at students that have completed community service, workplace experiences, co-curricular participation, industry credentials, et cetera. I'm going to highlight two of those areas this evening and I want to showcase, um, because we're coming up on awards night, um, what we have created are, as students earn these indicators, they're going to receive pins. So, um, for the industry credential students, we'll get certificates, but we're going to hold their pins until senior year because we don't want them to lose them. And then they'll receive an envelope of all of their awards. So in the area of industry credentials, we continue to see an increase. Uh, we have added two hundred and one new additional students to the mix. Um, and we also added two new certifications, one you saw last month, the community healthcare worker, where we have nine students earning that certification. And we also added PSEP thirty, which is the entry level Python programmer. It's a national recognized certification and it's, um, a junior entry level certification for students that want to get into programming. And we have seven students that earn that distinction. So as of today, uh, we have almost forty percent of our students earn an industry recognized credential. In the other area, I'd like to highlight, uh, the APs for teaching and learning, along with the athletic directors, have been working diligently to increase the number of students participating in co-curricular, extracurricular and athletic activities. We know students are engaged outside of school, they're more likely to be ga- engaged in school and feel more connected. Uh, last year, we had sixteen hundred and seventeen students participate in one of those areas. So they have to either be too co-curricular, too extra, too athletic, or any combination over the course of their four years. I'm happy to report this year, two thousand three hundred and forty-nine students, so almost fifty percent of the student population have earned the co-curricular indicator, meaning that they're doing two or more of these activities while in high school. The other area I'd like to highlight, um, is in, uh, with paper.co. We are quickly closing out year two of our contract and we continue to see positive results with the platform. To date, sixty-five percent of our students have been using paper.co at least one or more times. And we've had almost forty thousand learning moments. This is twenty-five thousand more than last year. Um, and we are also seeing increases in both the numbers of activities per student and the percentage of habitual users. So one of our goals this year was to increase the number of students, um, or, sorry, the activities per student. For Bremen and Hillcrest, we wanted to see that number closer to three activities per student. And Oak Forest and Tinley Park, at least four activities per student. I am really pleased to report, and this has been an all hands on deck effort, we have far exceeded that goal. Bremen, on average, is nine activities per student. Tinley Park, six and a half. Hillcrest, almost eleven activities per student. And Oak Forest, seven point six. A contributing factor for this increase comes from two new tools that paper introduced. One is called Pulse Questions, where teachers can actually leverage AI and create exit and entrance tickets for the students. Um, and also Teach-a-Sign, where teachers can directly assign an essay to the student, um, to use the platform. So both of those have contributed, specifically the Pulse Question, we've seen almost twenty-six thousand Pulse Question activities with our students. Another goal was to increase the percentage of students using paper four or more times, and we call these students habitual users. We've been emphasizing the use of paper by students and teachers at the ninth grade level to set a good foundation. Last year, thirty-one percent of our freshmen were considered habitual users. And our top student, who happened to be a freshman, used paper one hundred and fifty-seven times during the school year. As sophomores, so now that group as sophomores, this year, the number has increased to forty-seven percent of habitual users. Our top sophomore was the top freshman last year, and as of today, she's used it a hundred and thirty-seven times. On a side note, our current freshmen, forty-two percent of them are considered habitual users, so this is up eleven percent from last year. And we also continue to see an increase in habitual users at both the eleventh and twelfth grades.
Thank you.
Um, board, uh, there's three quick items I wanted to update you with tonight. First is that, uh, both our laptop purchase and our annual iPad purchase for students were made in advance of recent price increases, increases that have already occurred since our purchase. Our iPad purchase this year was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars less than last year due to price decreases. And the laptop purchase that the board approved back in December, um, if you remember, we were, we were ordering a little earlier than usual. Um, if we had ordered those at our regular time, which would be about this time, it would have cost us an additional hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars if purchased today. So the board definitely made the right choice, authorizing that purchase a few months earlier than we typically would. Uh, the second I wanted to update you on is regarding registration. Uh, we opened registration on April seventh and we've already registered three hundred and fifty families. Uh, they have already completed registration for next year and we're still looking for ways to make it easier for families to register and also supporting families that need individualized help, um, getting registered for school. And last is regarding our safety and security program. Uh, this summer, we will be wrapping up our smart, uh, door lock installation, which will result in eight hundred and ten smart locks across our four campuses, the Ed Center and the Ed Center. It's made it much easier for us to secure our buildings and investigate any scenarios should the need arise. I can tell you that this is where other schools are now looking at and, and, uh, starting to investigate and we are definitely ahead of the game. Uh, as this, as this program reaches completion next year, we're going to look at the need to update our school intercom system as that's an area that we need some improvement. Um, there's a lot of options and we'll bring that to you when we have more information.
Good evening, board, this is the April facilities report. We'll start here at Hillcrest. Uh, this month, we had a leak at our underground water main in front of the school, door number two. Uh, the leak was repaired over spring break and at the time of repair, we noticed that the valve stem to shut off is also broken, so we replaced it as well. Both were completed at the same time, there was minimal, minimal interruption to activities and no interruption to destruction to complete repair. Uh, we have also received all pricing for the repair and replacement of damaged equipment in the pool basement. At this time, we're waiting to hear back from the insurance company on potential reimbursement. Once we hear back from them, uh, we'll schedule contractors to begin the repair work. At Oak Forest High School, we have drained the pool for, um, some maintenance that is needed. Uh, some of the maintenance that we'll be doing is repawking joints that, um, causing some leaks. We're going to repaint the pool and we have to replace some ceiling tiles that are actually above the pool. Uh, the maintenance team started this last week, it'll take a few months to complete everything. Uh, but with our in-house maintenance staff doing all the work, we'll save tens of thousands of dollars rather than having a contractor do it. Uh, and the pool will be open by the end of summer break. At Tinley Park High School, we had a circulating pump above boiler one leak onto our ignition transformer, which caused a TARC, um, our HVAC techn- technician drain system. We isolated the pump, completed all the repairs, uh, the system was only down for one day during the time of warm weather where heat wasn't required. At Bremen, uh, we received six hundred and fifty-four LED light fixtures for free through a common, um, incentive program. Uh, the fixtures are being installed in classrooms. As of last week, over five hundred of them have been installed and we should be wrapping that project up in the next week or so. Uh, this project's not only an aesthetic upgrade, but will also contribute to our energy reduction. And then district-wide, on March twenty-sixth, we sent twenty members of our maintenance team to get aerial lift, trained and certified. The purpose of the training was to ensure that our team members have proper knowledge and operation, and operating safety protocols when using our manuals. All twenty people are now aerial lift certified, this certification's good for three years. And the company that we went through, went to said that after the three years, they'll recertify. That's the April facility report.
Thank you.
Board, I'm excited to share with you the, uh, April Special Education Department update. April's a busy month in the Special Education Department within, in regards to celebrations. Uh, we started the month by celebrating paraprofessional appreciation day on Wednesday, April second. Our paraprofessionals are vital members of our school teams and they help support students academically and behaviorally across the school. We celebrated our nearly sixty district paraprofessionals with donuts and notes of appreciation. The month of April also marks Occupational Therapy Month and Autism Acceptance Month. Um, nearly two years ago, the board approved my request to directly hire the district's first occupational therapist rather than contracting that service out. So I would be remiss if I did not thank you and also celebrate our amazing OT Liz Hathazy, who tirelessly works with students at our five campuses on improving their activities of daily living, finding motor function, organizational and executive function skills and independence. Autism Acceptance Month celebrates and honors the experience, experiences and identities of autistic individuals. It emphasizes understanding, inclusion and support. Um, autism is more than just a disability category, we celebrate both the challenges and triumphs of our autistic students in District Two Twenty Eight. Between April twenty-first and April twenty-fifth, all six hundred and fifty students receiving special ed services in our five buildings will be taking the STAR assessment in reading and math. STAR is a reliable, valid, research-based assessment that provides baseline and progress monitoring data to help IUP teams develop academic strengths and areas of needed improvement. They help, it helps drive appropriate instructions, set goals and track progress throughout the year. Our students take this assessment three times a year in the fall, winter and spring so that we can define academic baselines and measure growth. On May fifteenth, I will be hosting my annual timely and meaningful consultation meeting with private school representatives and homeschool families within the boundaries of District Two Twenty Eight. This meeting is a statutory requirement under the Individuals with Disabilities in Education Act, IDEA. Annually, I must hold this meeting, um, and talk with these representatives about the district's responsibility in terms of child find, proportionate chair and consulting on district services that could be provided to students in private schools. Uh, finally, um, a path, or a T-shirt is in front of, uh, your, each of your seats. This is the Special Ed Department, um, T-shirt for the year. Um, it honors our, um, staff within the department, it pays homage to many hats that special educators wear. Um, the theme was kind of believers, motivators, innovators, educators. Uh, so thank you for your support. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Uh, just a few updates from the world of personnel. Uh, last week, early last week, I met with the four building, uh, associate principals and we began the task of revising, um, and making any changes to the Student Parent Handbook. Uh, we've also, uh, in addition to, uh, you know, using stakeholders and, and, and everyone, sort of all hands on deck to take a look at the handbook, we'll be using, uh, Illinois Principals Association has what's called the Model Student Handbook. Um, it is basically a tool that districts can use to, you know, in reference of what Dr. Sikora mentioned earlier with all the legislation changes that go on on an annual basis. Uh, using the Model Student Handbook, um, they use the legal team from Illinois Principals Association to make the recommendations of what types of changes should be made to our handbook so that we are most updated in terms of any legislation on an annual basis. So we'll be using that moving forward. Um, also, uh, in terms of personnel, Hillcrest here, uh, I spoke with you previously that we had a few special ed openings, uh, they've conducted most of the interviews. I believe they have one more interview tomorrow for the finals, uh, and then they'll be able to make recommendations. So that should be, uh, ready to go for next month. And then Delta has an English position, uh, that they are also ready and, and wrapping up with their interviews as well. They should be making recommendations as well. So, um, at least up to now, barring any changes that might come, uh, we should have our certified staff filled already in April for next year, so.
All right. I'm taking the presentation tonight. So for the finance portion of the cabinet presentations tonight, we're going to discuss the financial outlook of the district, specifically as it pertains to some potentially challenging situations that might come up. It's important to remember that the main focus and priority of this district has always been and will always be maintaining academic, extracurricular, athletic programs and maintaining student support. That has been evidenced in every financial report, every budget and every project that has been presented to the District Two Two Eight Board of Education. So long as we can all agree that that priority should remain our top focus, we'll be better prepared to handle those situations and better equipped to overcome some of those challenges. We'll start with some finance basics for the district. First, this district is a cash basis accounting system. This means that revenues and expenditures are recorded on the books as they occur. This is important to remember because there have been instances where we've potentially received a late payment, um, after the end of the fiscal year, which does affect that fiscal year's bottom line. Our financial designation through Illinois State Board of Education is recognition and has been for many years. This is the highest category of financial recognition you can get, which basically means that we have the highest level of financial strength in the state of Illinois. This district is also subject to the property tax extension limitation law. This means that our annual property tax revenues can only grow by five percent or CPI, whichever is less. This is significant because our property taxes make up a significant portion of our income for the year. Keeping in mind that our revenues can only grow by this limitation law is important when we're talking about overall annual revenues versus expenditures. I would also like to comment on the long and short-term debt. Currently, the only debt that is still outstanding in this district is the fifty million dollars of our qualified school construction bond, which leaves us with about sixty-one percent of our long-term debt remaining to be used. And we currently have no short-term debt outstanding. That leaves us with the full hundred percent of our short-term debt allowable to be used. We are also a tier one district with the state of Illinois, which means that we receive the most amount of state funding through evidence-based funding each year. The first piece of data that I want to talk about is our historical operating fund balances. Our operating funds are the education, operations and maintenance, transportation and IMRF and social security funds. These funds incur the operational expenditures of the district. Working cash is also technically considered an operating fund, however, this is strictly the reserves fund. You cannot print checks from the working cash fund, the only way you can access that money is by transferring it from working cash into one of our other operating funds. So let's talk about the light blue bars first. These represent our operating fund balances of the four funds as of June thirtieth of that fiscal year. You'll notice from twenty eighteen and the years moving forward, the significant increases in that particular piece of fund balance. The reason for this being, that is when the district started receiving most of its evidence-based funding increases. Looking at the dark blue bars, which represent our working cash fund balances, you'll see from twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen, those numbers decrease. This is because working cash was moved out of reserves and into the operating funds to cover deficits in those funds each year. From twenty eighteen through twenty twenty-four, that number remains relatively stagnant. That's because we have not needed to move our working cash out of our, out of our working cash fund into the operating funds. The other thing I want to comment on here, as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, the district had two hundred and four point nine seven days cash on hand. The Illinois state standard to be considered financially stable is ninety. So you can see, because of this, we are significantly above that, we are in a much more financially stable state. For comparison, just to kind of give you some perspective as to how we, uh, compare to other school districts, I provided the fund balance totals for five other districts in our area. Of those five, only one exceeds our total fund balance. And even that district still ha- it does not have five point four million dollars in working cash. That's an area where we exceed that. This helps paint a picture of how we compare to other districts in our area and helps portray the financial stability that we do currently hold. The next piece I want to talk about is our historical operating surplus and deficit. The surplus or deficit for the year represents the number of dollars spent versus the number of dollars taken in. Twenty eighteen was the first year that this district ran a natural surplus. Natural meaning more money was received than spent and did not have any bond issuances. In twenty twenty-three, as I mentioned earlier, because we are a cash basis accounting, when we received, um, our interest payments and our QSCB subsidy payments in August, that was not recorded on our books until later. The gray bar represents what the surplus would have been in twenty twenty-three had we received those payments on time. One thing I do want to comment here, even having run a, a deficit technically in twenty twenty-three, it did not have a significant impact on our fund balances. Our fund balances were still relatively stable. The historical financing cycle of this district was we would borrow twenty million dollars, pay it back over four years, borrow twenty million dollars again and repeat the cycle. The reason that we would do this is to cover many of the deficits that we incurred each year. Twenty fourteen was our last cycle of this and we did not renew it in twenty eighteen. This chart represents our bond and interest payments. The dark blue bars represent bonds that are not qualified school construction bonds and the light blue bars represent our regular QSCB payments each year. You can see from twenty nineteen all the way through to twenty forty, as of right now, there will be no change to our debt service levy. This means that taxpayers will not see an increase in their taxes due to the district borrowing money as it currently stands. So let's talk about some of our federal funding. These are the grants that the, the district receives for federal funding. They include all of our title accounts, um, IDEA, Perkins and Acer. The two biggest ones that we've seen each year are Title and IDEA. Evidence here in our graph showing all of the, the federal funding received from twenty fourteen through twenty twenty-four. 2024. One thing I want to note here is our Acer funds have already been spent and we have already received the money. I know there was some talk about taking back Acer funds. We've already spent it. We've already allocated it, and we've already received the funds in return. As I said with the last slide, Title and IDEA do make up the two biggest portions of But what I want to focus on is that, yes, federal funding is a source of income. However, it is not our only source of income. In fact, federal funding, funding only makes up 3.1% of total dollars received in District 228. Local makes up 47.7%, and state funding, i.e. property taxes being the biggest piece of that, make up 49.2. Okay, so looking to the future and projections and how we're going to, you know, plan for some of these unexpected, how are we going to manage expectations? How are we going to account for the unknown? In most instances, you would look at three specific scenarios. The best case, the worst case, and then what's most realistic? What's most realistic to happen? However, no one can say with absolute certainty which one of those is going to happen, right? We have several unknown factors, including salaries. We have contracts, we have firing. We have health insurance premiums, which could, could go up or down either way every year. We also have to look at vendor contracts, transportation, and then all of the insurance that we have to hold for the buildings and our general liability. As Mr. Baffo just pointed out, there are several acts of God and things that could occur to our facilities that we have no intention of happening but occur anyways. That's just a part of life, so what do you do? When we're going to address possible funding concerns, we're going to take three steps, right? You're going to evaluate and analyze your current programs. You're going to look at your current projects, taking into consideration what is currently on the books. What are we currently paying for? And then we're going to look at optimizing our current fiscal resources, i.e. fund balances. Where do we want our fund balances to remain? Do we want to look at continuing to run all of those programs and how it affects each of the fund balances? And finally, we can explore borrowing options. This district, as I showed in the first slide, has a significant debt service extension base, meaning we are allowed to borrow a fair amount of money, also evidenced by the fact that we would borrow $20 million every four years. Some of you may have seen this slide before, and I think it's probably the most important one, we're determining how we're going to address some of these concerns. You have to find the sweet spot, right? What do we want to keep our debt levels at? What do we want to keep our fund balance levels at? What programs and projects are we going to continue and maintain? Each of these three will be taken into consideration as we address some of these possible funding concerns. But here's the takeaway. This district is in the best financial condition it has ever been in. We have been able to maintain healthy fund balances. We've been able to maintain and add student programs, maintain and add staff. We've been able to offer competitive salary and benefits packages, all because we are able to utilize all of the financial resources that we are currently working with. This district has faced difficult times in the past, and they probably will again. I am not going to stand here and say, this is the only time we're ever going to have to deal with this. That's just not going to happen. I have a lot of time left in my career. I don't anticipate that being the case. But, as you can see, we have the, the ability to utilize some of these current financial resources. The buffer between needing to make decisions on current programming and things like that is much smaller for us because we do have the ability to utilize some of those fund balances and utilize some of those surpluses. Who has questions? Really?
Thank you. Very nice. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Is there another one?
Is there at the end?
I don't want to follow that. Right? I can't, I don't want to follow that. All right, good evening, board. From the Delta Drakes, before I get going this evening, I would be remiss if I don't acknowledge that I would like my daughters to be in leadership and not influencers. So since Brielle found out that this is going to be on YouTube, Brielle Collins is in the house, and now she's been on YouTube, so we can like cross that up with her bucket list and then she'll be good to go. Thank you guys for having my daughter attend today. She's nice and bearish, as I like to keep them. Just a couple of quick announcements for you. She's getting geared up on April 24th. We are going to be hosting our annual Bring Your Child to Work Day. Even if I did not want to host it, which I'm very much looking forward to, my kids ask about it all the time. They love coming in and seeing the students we get to work with over at DEP and Delta Achieve, so we're excited to have that on the 24th coming up. Today marked our fortieth out of our anticipated sixty-eight graduates towards the district's numbers this year. They're dropping in the best way possible, like flies. They keep finishing up now, and they're all excited to go to prom and graduation, and it's just an exciting, it's kind of crazy, but it's an exciting part of our school year. So, we are anticipating sixty-eight, and like I said, we've already hit forty as of today. May 17th, I'll be heading down to my alma mater at ISU to celebrate Hillcrest's very own Darcy Walker, as she was recently accepted and is going to be awarded the Those Who Excel. She's the recipient of the Those Who Excel Award. So we'll be traveling down to ISU on May 17th to celebrate her. And finally, I wanted to touch on a really neat opportunity that I am not sure if everyone's aware of or not, and so Dana Dobrovitz, our counselor, I know I speak of her often at these things because she keeps finding unique opportunities for our students. Next week, on Tuesday, April 22nd, Bremins Juan Cisnero, one of our chief students who is down to his final four classes and will be graduating at the end of the school year, will be traveling to Juliet Junior College. He will be participating in a chef for a day. So this unique opportunity is designed to give students a taste of what it's like to experience a day in the life of a culinary arts student and to ignite their passion for the culinary arts. At 8:00 AM on Tuesday, April 22nd, Juan Cisnero will be attending Juliet Junior College's Culinary Arts Program Chef for a Day. He previously attended a tour of the program with his counselor Dana Dobrovitz, who worked with our staff and theirs to get him signed up for this amazing experience. Juan plans to apply for their Culinary Arts Program next week with Ms. Dobrovitz, following his experience at JJC, and he does aspire to have a career as a chef. This no-cost program allows prospective students to participate in hands-on food activities in their state-of-the-art kitchens, learn about diverse employment opportunities in the food industry. They also spend time with JJC's award-winning team of culinary arts chef instructors, who can answer any questions that they have about the, about the program. As well, they are provided a complimentary meal voucher of up to $10 per person at their student-run restaurants, Thrive and Lual Cafe. So I just wanted to bring that up because I think it's going to be a really unique opportunity for Juan to participate in. He's very excited for it, and this all came just from a visit out to the college itself, so I'm imploring all of you guys too to take a look because they are looking for more of our students from 228 to join them, and it is of no cost and a unique opportunity for them to do so, so I'll be reporting back in May of how that went for them. That's it. Thanks.
Good evening on behalf of the Titans. Mark the calendars, April 29th is our memorial soccer game versus Evergreen Park for one of our former students Christine Herman, who unfortunately left us all too soon due to cancer. It's, the memorial game is called forever on our roster, and like I said, we'll be hosting Evergreen Park at home with some raffle baskets and split the pot, and there were t-shirts, and, you know, our soccer program really does a great job honoring Christine as being a great soccer player during her time at Stanley Park High School. A little bit on a lighter note, hats off to our bass fishing team, and I have to say thank you to our board for really giving our schools the opportunity to get this started. Our bass fishing team is really an eclectic group of people, and it's just fun and amazing to see how excited they are to get started with this. We actually have our first district tournament. It's going to be at Wolf Lake on April 24th with the four of our district schools, and I know our kids are very excited to participate in that, just kind of a new opportunity for them. On the 30th, we're having our Titan Extravaganza, where on our SIP day, we are pairing our Titan teachers and staff members and sharing some of their expertise or their hobbies or their talents with our students. We kicked it off last year, and it was an amazing success, just creating another opportunity for our students to connect with our teachers and to see what they're, what they're really like maybe outside the classroom. But everything from fun and games to sports to trivia, karaoke, art, cooking, whatever it may be, our teachers are sharing their personal talents with our kids on that day. In, in the world of our fine arts, I think it's been widely celebrated that this is our, our band instructor Vince Ayellos last year. He's really done an amazing job with our, our music program and all of the bands and all of his efforts over the years. Just had the Jazz Cafe on Sunday. The musical The Lightning Thief is coming up. It'll be his last musical on the 25th, the 26th, and the 27th. Please make it a point to come on out. I, I remember Ms. Gleason there with her whole flock of grandchildren and one of our, our musicals, and you're all invited to come out and see what is always an amazing performance. And speaking of Vince, they made it to superstate for a band, again, kind of nice and a nice way to bring his, his retirement to closure, that he'll be competing at superstate one more time. Lastly, yes, ACT is right around the corner, just a matter of hours as a matter of fact. As we have done for, I can't even count how many years now, our teachers, we have twenty-two teachers that are coming at 6:30 tomorrow morning to cook breakfast for our juniors. Full-on breakfast, eggs, sausage, pancakes, cereal, toast, juice, fruit, you name it. They can have as much as they want, trying to ready them and put them in the best possible position to do their very best on the ACT. And finally, with that, just a little bit of a proud moment, you know, we have, you know, in the, in the day and age of, you know, schools maybe using or accepting test scores to get into colleges, the pendulum is starting to swing a little bit back again, where schools are expecting students to report their, their standardized test scores. We never really lost sight of that and really trying to put our efforts into that, you know, academic bucket. We calculated that 167 of our 271 juniors are actually engaged in some type of an SAT prep program, all readying themselves for the big date tomorrow. So that 61% of our juniors are actually engaged and enrolled and participating in a prep program. So, we wish them luck tomorrow. We'll happily get up early in the morning and cook them breakfast and get them started out on a right note. Hey, if you're looking for a pancake or some eggs, come on by, we'll, we'll happily have some breakfast for you, and prom is May 9th at Silver Lake Golf Course. So, lots of fun as we bring this year to an end. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening from the Bremen Braves. Lots of fun, exciting events coming up as we wrap up the school year. It's hard to believe that we are rolling into the end of the year. Our upcoming spring play is scheduled for April 24th through the 26th. It's Disney's Dare to Dream, so if you'd like to join us for that, it'll be hosted in our main gym. We also on May 2nd have two fun activities during the day at school. We'll be hosting our Bring Your Child to Work Day, which is always a big hit. Our current students like to see our teachers and their young ones kind of all interacting together. It's a great day for, you know, our kids just to see their teachers in a different light as they get to see that kind of family component. In the evening, sense of community and families again, is our Cinco de Mayo Celebration. So that is scheduled for Friday, May 2nd from 5:30 to 9:30. Looking forward to all of our groups that come together to plan that. There's a lot of work that goes into it, but our students really lead the way there, so it's very exciting. Staff First Student Charity Soccer, Soccer Game is scheduled for April 24th during eighth period. We have a great group of students that are organizing that. They pick a different charity each year, so that's going to be really an incredible event, and it's a fun way for kind of our seniors to close out one of their last final fun events. Speaking of charity, our St. Baldry's fundraiser raised $6,844. That was something that we brought back after taking a few years off of that. Ms. Rauk and our student council decided to bring that back, so that was a great event and a great assembly right before we went into spring break. From activities, our group interperformers, we had SSC All-Conference cast members of Allison Walker, Irene Carrillo Puerta, Aldo Pozos, and Faith Eiler, so that was a great accomplishment, having four students make the all-cast list. FCCLA just returned from their state competition, and we had a great number of students go down to state. I'm also very proud to announce that outside of eleven students finishing gold and silver, we had an additional chunk of students that finished first in the state. So I'd like to congratulate Devon Ferguson and Mackenzie Martinez, Melanie Roman and Ni'amah Bahora, and Elizabeth Martinez, who finished first overall in the entire state of Illinois for FCCLA. We're very proud of them. And then finally, coming up on April 30th, our school-wide synergy SIP committee of staff stole an idea from the Stanley Park Titans. This is what happens when we get together at our data retreats and share kind of the cool things we're doing. We are planning a Titan Extravaganza. It's called Braves Beyond the Classroom, so we've got about fifty different sessions. You really get to know your staff when you ask them what their hobbies, their skills are outside of the workday, and we are hosting things from Athlete 101 to Ask a Cop, Backyard Chickens from Coop to Kitchen, Breathwork for Beginners, darts, beekeeping, junk journaling, flying tights, we've got a reptile show, got a little bit of everything and something special for everyone. So our kids are going to be able to sign up for two different sessions at the end of the school day, where you can kind of see our, our staff in different ways, and we're excited to showcase everything that's got going on there. So thank you to the Titans for sharing that idea. Thank you.
Is there any oops of kitchen? Did she say? Okay. You might have to take some time and head over to see the Braves. Okay, let's kill them those chickens. Anyway, greetings from Oak Forest High School. Some recent updates. From the athletic fields, our co-op lacrosse team, as you know, we have a district co-op lacrosse team, they were ranked for the first time in district history, so they were really excited about that. They started the season eight and oh, really looking forward to some great things, and a special thanks to our coach, Dan Mauer, on that. I want to welcome our new varsity football coach, Zach Zadak, has some Oak Forest roots, is actually an Oak Forest resident, and he's already started working with the team, getting to know all those guys, and we're excited for what the future holds for our football program. As the end of the year approaches, I, I want to mention that we're starting to recognize seniors in many different ways, and tomorrow we're actually hosting a senior signing. We have fourteen of our senior athletes that we're going to be recognizing who are committed to continuing their athletics and their academic careers, you know, at the college level. On the activities front, it's been a busy time. We inducted new members into the national, the world, the World Language National Honor Society. We also had Jazz Night this past Saturday. We hosted a senior lit fest. All of our seniors got to come down out of their English classes and, and spend the day working with one of our Bengal alum, actually John Shu is a New York Times bestselling author, and he shared with those students about his writing process, his personal experiences, and it was great to have him back in, in the building. Our student newspaper club advanced to the state finals. We actually have a student, Cecilia Cristobal, heading to compete at state in editorial writing, so good luck to her. Our varsity club hosted a week-long, first ever that I can remember in thirty-two years there, Coaches and Sponsor Appreciation Week last week. So, the varsity club did a really nice job of having athletes and students send some personal notes to the coaches and sponsors throughout the week. We had a High Five Wednesday, counting up how many high fives. We had teachers actually with counters how many high fives they got throughout the day. They did a little best of competition, and people voted for who had the best game face. Mr. Force won that one. Who was most passionate was Deventi, and it all ended with a very nice luncheon for the coaches and sponsors. We are performing Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, the musical, this month on the 25th, 26th, and 27th. And last but not least, I would like to give a shout-out to our senior, Ryan Lipsett. Ryan has been a national representative on the Mental Health Youth Advisory Committee, so working with that national organization for the last two years, he's, during the course of this, he has been interviewed by local news media. You may have seen some of that, but he recently presented at the IEA Assembly to advocate for the inclusion of mental health strategies in the classroom. He was, he was written up once again in newspapers because of that, and they were mentioning how there were only, I think, three people who received a standing ovation during that conference, and that included the governor and our senior, Ryan Lipsett. So... So a great job to him. Ryan, along with our social workers, have been working. We always host in April a mental health awareness week and that will be next week at Oak Forest High School. Their theme is Your Mind, Your Power. There will be therapy dogs and speakers and art therapy and sound bowls and meditation and yoga. I know, not the coop to the kitchen, but we're going to meditate over Oak Forest and check out what they're doing with those chickens. We're going to end next week with an all-school assembly then as well, hopefully to set us off on the right page here as the end of the year gets so busy and getting everyone the right mind frame for all these tests and the final exams. So thank you, that's the news from Oak Forest and not to be confused with President Washington, Principal Washington.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple very interesting presentations for you a little later, but first I'd like to share some notes and some things coming up here at Hillcrest within the next week or two. Next Tuesday, the twenty-second, five P.M., our choir and band concert will be going on right here in this very room. Like to invite all you to that. Also, Wednesday night, six P.M., twenty-third, be our Senior Honors Night. We'd like to see if you can join us for that as well. Spring Play is also next week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, so please come out and join us for that. Some highlights of some things that have gone on around here in the past couple of weeks. On the fifth of April, we hosted Congresswoman Robin Kelly's Youth Opportunities Fair. This is the second year in a row that we have done this. It was such a success last year that they approached us again this year and asked us to host. We have over forty vendors that showed up, given our students an opportunity to network, meet some people, meet some job, receive some job opportunities for themselves. And it was a great event. Looking forward, and they say they want to keep coming back here every year. So we will continue to host that as long as they want to have it here at Hillcrest. On the fourth of April, we hosted a Hoops and Heroes fundraiser for Project Fire Buddies. It was a night of basketball skills competition in conjunction with Country Club Hills Fire Department and Hazel Crest Fire Department, raising money for Project Fire Buddies. And they support critically ill children. This was sponsored by two of our teachers, Heather Castaneda and Susie Inslee. They raised over two thousand dollars for that organization. One thing I always have to mention too is our Senior Citizens Breakfast that we held. We had a Mardi Gras theme this year. We had a great turnout. And to be honest with you, they, those seniors, they're brutally honest with you, whether or not they like what's going on or the food. We had some complaints about our food last year, so we changed up everything, had a great menu for them. They really enjoyed it, played some music trivia, had some bingo going. And we even had a group of, I believe it was like ten retired Hillcrest teachers that returned and joined us for that. And they were surprised to see and happy to see the great things that were going on around here. So that's really what we have going on here at Hillcrest right now. You know, our presentations are going to be by Mr. Jason Thomas from Three Seeds. And Ms. Cora Tate, one of our science teachers, is going to give a presentation on some recent field trips that her class went on as well. So there we go. We'll enjoy these when we can and go Hawks.
Good evening, everyone. I want to first say thank you for giving us this opportunity to talk about all the great things that have been occurring in my anatomy class this year. I am a true believer that hands-on, engaging activities is the best way or the key factors to students understanding scientific principles and concepts. So with that being said, I do a lot of creative things. Well, I shouldn't say I do. The students do a lot of creative things in order for them to get involved and to get those skills that they need in order to pursue, whether it be a medical field after high school or go just into college. One of the activities that I hold here is the Northern Illinois University One-Day College Anatomy Course for high school students. So this is an enrichment activity where you have to be invited. And so for the last two years, Hillcrest student, anatomy students have been invited to attend this one-day course. We are the only public school in the Chicagoland and South suburban area that has been invited to do this one-day course. So we recently went last Thursday and the students from the Director of Biological Science and Graduate School continuously give our students all the accolades. They've never seen a group of students that have come well-prepared. They have never seen a group of students that are so engaged. They have never seen a group of students that are asking questions and answering questions that they have a set lecture and lab. And they were like, well, we can't even do what we have planned. We have to go even further, like really dive in and see what it is that they know. The students love it, so this is not an opportunity where I choose students. I present students with the idea at the beginning of the school year, so in August. Students choose whether or not they want to accept the challenge. And I explain to them that it's a lot of work. They're going to have to work hard. They have to be present in school. So for most of the year, they don't like me, but I'm okay with that because, and I work them and I push them hard. And I'm okay with them not liking me because I know that I'm teaching. I know that they're learning and I know that I'm preparing them for that post-secondary. So they can talk about the experience with NIU. Again, most of the students, one hundred percent of the students take on that challenge. And they want to do it. And part of it is dealing with three cadavers, human cadavers. Dissection is a big part of our curriculum. And I thank you for supplying us with the tools and equipment and materials that we need in order to reach those academic goals. So they deal with three cadavers. They have a quick lecture. They have a lab, and then they have to take a test. So my trade-off with this, because this is like fast-paced and I integrate our anatomy curriculum with Northern Illinois curriculum so that the students are prepared, is that if they are able to pass the Northern Illinois test, then they are exempt from my final exam. So they're like, you know what? We're going for the northern one. We don't want to take them. But I will have a few kind of explain and talk about their experience and how it has helped them grow in science and kind of want to take that next step into the medical field.
Hello, my name is Serenity Shelton. And Ms. Tate, she well-prepared me for the NIU field trip. We did a cadaver lab, so we knew all the muscles. She studied us on the muscles. So when we came to NIU, I was very well-prepared. And we also took a test like at Ms. Tate's class that followed the NIU test.
So what she's talking about is that they have to go around to different stations in the classroom. And they have one minute to figure out maybe what muscle is pinned or what part of the skeletal system is pinned or what action does it do? What is the function? So at first, when we first did it, they were like, you're not giving us enough time. This is not fair. I don't, I can't do this. Like, hey, we have to prepare. We have to get ready because this is how college life is. But they got the hang of it.
Yeah. The test was really like, really like snappy. And I feel like I did really well on it. And these shirts prepared me extremely well. They really, they really helped me. And we did this in class, Ms. Tate.
Our supervisor, Vivian Turek, bought these shirts for us. And we just used the shirts to basically focus on every unit in anatomy that we needed to cover. So we have skeletal system on here. We have nervous system on here. We have digestive system on here. And students were able to just use their shirts as notes. So when, and when we walked into NIU, they're like, oh, man, I just bought these scrubs. I like that idea. Anyone else?
So we went into NIU thinking, oh, we're not going to know like a lot of this. But throughout the year, Ms. Tate had prepared us, like saying she prepared us, we were prepared is an understatement. I mean, we went in there thinking we weren't going to know a lot of it. But as soon as we got there, some of the student teachers that were talking to us, we were correcting some of them. Even I was surprised because, you know, I wasn't expecting that. But I mean, what she had taught us, we had like basically learned everything. We had learned all the skeletal parts, the skeletal system, the muscular system. I mean, we were well-prepared throughout the year, even though it was a little hard to class. I'm really thankful, I'm grateful for her, you know, for teaching us and helping us get through the year.
And this was their bible. Like, I bought binders, they had to keep all of their notes. And we did everything that could possibly even be thought of, so. That's it.
All right, how's everybody doing today? I never know where to stand. All right, so I'm going to start off with a quick question for the board. I like to be interactive. Y'all okay with that, board?
Yes.
Okay. Raise your hand if you have ever gone to prom. Great, okay. That's what a lot of our seniors are thinking about. And what do you guys think the average cost of prom is for seniors in 2025?
The girl or the guy?
Well, I surveyed some students. Let's start with the girls. Why just do the girls because the guys was like, whatever. So what do you guys think the average price is for prom? What'd you say?
Two thousand.
You say two? Anybody else? One? The average price from who I surveyed in my informal survey was between three and five thousand dollars. Would y'all agree?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm just saying. So if you guys see a senior around, y'all want to buy a prom ticket, it'd be a nice gesture. Okay, that's my lightsbreaker. I did a plug for y'all, okay? All right, so my name is Jason Thomas, Three Seeds Mentoring Group. And I'll be bright. I know y'all tired, y'all want to go home. We did a HBCU tour this summer. That's the picture of our students. We get sponsors donate shirts. And that's one of our students shooting pool. She was really not good, but that was a good shot. It was a great shot. And Davy was encouraging her. That was at, what college was that?
Rust.
Rust, that's right. That was Rust. All right, next slide. This was at Lemoine Owens. We had another shirt, Wakanda University. And to the right, that was our talent show. That's lip syncing, y'all. You can't beat that, right? They were really, really pushing it. And I liked, we have a talent show where the students have to do something every year. It's a great time. And yeah, that's this picture to kind of show like what we did. Next one. This is, what city was this, y'all? Y'all remember? Memphis, yes, on a rooftop. So we get dressed up, we have a dinner, went to Memphis. And then one of the schools we went to this year went to Jackson State. And I like to always tell the, oh, Jackson State, that's right. Jackson State was popular. And with Jackson State, we have students that graduated and did our tour. So people who graduated twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-one, they showed a longevity. They're still in school, they're still progressing. And they said, Mr. Thomas, can you come? I said, you'll be my tour guide. And she did, and it was great. So the students who leave here, we stay in contact with them until they graduate. So it was a really good time and that was the dress-up thing that we did. Up next, this is one of our partnerships we have with ComEd. So ComEd is trying to get students into construction and things like that. So this was the Women in STEM. And some of the students that are up there are here in the audience. And that was the professional women that were talking about their path. And then they had to climb the electrical. They had like the little thing, they showed them how to do it in the hard hat, the training facility. And with that, what I wanted to add, this is another plug, if people are interested, they have another, they're looking for young people to, what is this called? ComEd Youth Ambassadors, they're hiring. So if you are a young person, only thing about it that's a big thing is they're all in the city. So they're trying, yeah, no, that's something, right? It's in the city, but they're paying, they're trying to get young people into it. So if you guys want to talk to me, I can give you the information. But they're really hiring for young people for a great summer, so these are seniors. And what else I want to add? Is it, is the video next, right? Oh, no, it's, oh, okay, I forgot about this. Okay. This was Saturday. So Saturday, we do a robotics competition. It's called Southworks. It's about fifteen schools. Where did he go? Where Jada did? Clap it up for Jada, y'all. They could have won, but his catapult didn't. It, you know how like when you shoot a shot and it rims and it goes out? That's what happened to him. So everybody say, aw. Okay, but that was them competing. We would have took third, but we didn't. But that's all the different schools. And the students get to do hands-on stuff. So we do that every year for the past eight years, it was great. And then the last thing I'm going to show you guys is a video. And this video is ComEd, so it was like fifty students there. And, don't make that face. It was fifty students there and they selected our students to speak. And two of them are in this room and I'm so proud of them because this was like a very expensive like video. And they did it with one take and they were very poised. I want you guys to see, go ahead, roll that footage.
Today, we brought fifty students together for our STEM Lab. Want them to learn about STEM and solar projects.
Not everybody has an opportunity to be exposed, you know, to these particular careers. And so what we're doing with programs like STEM Lab is doing that exposure. And then also at the same time, it gives them an experience where they have a hands-on opportunity to really understand what do we mean by STEM-related careers? What do we mean by STEM concepts?
I would definitely recommend my friends to come to STEM Lab. Not only for the experience, but for the community aspect. You get to meet new people from different schools, different areas. And the adults are very like kind, very friendly, very open to talk, give you little insider tips about being in STEM fields. It was a very good experience.
We all need to be inspired by something, right? Something that may have seemed today that may spark some interest in science, technology, or math. And I'm happy that ComEd has a program such as this that allows me to take everything I've learned and pour it back into our students.
ComEd is very committed to making sure that we're building pipelines that represent individuals from all the communities that we serve. Oftentimes, we talk about what's possible. We may limit the scope of what we think we can achieve. But this morning, we encouraged the students to understand that the impossible is very possible. They just have to continue down their path. They have to continue to move forward. And the mentors that we had today are demonstrations of what is possible.
If you're just a curious person and willing to try something new, I definitely say come and try it out. Do it for the experience. It's very fun and it's like a good first-time thing to do if you've never tried STEM or done anything in engineering before.
Inspiring young people, impacting communities. That's what ComEd does. That's energy at its best.
All right. Every student that came, how much money did y'all get?
Two fifty.
They got two fifty to show up. So I put it in the group chat and some people didn't go. It's crazy. Last thing is we have a senior banquet on the twenty-ninth. It's where we give away like some of our business partners give TVs, microwaves. But what do y'all think the number one thing is that they want? What do y'all think? Number one thing they want? You said computer, laptop, what else? Gaming headphones? What do y'all say? What do y'all want? Fridge? And y'all say somebody charger?
The outlet thing and make it more than two.
Yeah. So we try to think and they think, what? So we asked them, they give us the wish list and we have people buy it. So if the board members, if you guys want to come, it's in this room on the twenty-ninth. You'll see them get their awards and personality stuff and accolades. So thank y'all for listening. You'll see them get their awards and personality stuff and accolades, so thank y'all for listening. I'm out. Y'all go to sleep now.
Before we move on, uh, students, thank you so much for coming. I really enjoy when you're here and, and present and talk to us, so thank you before you guys go. Our principal, I think that's all of our principals, um, so moving on to three point four, our FOIA requests.
And Mrs. Ressler. Uh, since the last regular board meeting, we received the following Freedom of Information Act requests. We received actually ten separate FOIA requests from the email ad.cius.venum@proton.me requesting actual electronic data maintained by the Tredder's Office for the annual expenses paid to identify vendors, firms, and individuals for the fiscal year spanning nineteen ninety-eight to twenty twenty-four by school district, including any predecessor districts that existed at the end of each respective fiscal year and have since consolidated or annexed into the current district. These requests have been completed. Thank you.
Any board member requests?
So, I attended the closing ceremony for the Snowball Retreat this past Saturday, and it was, it was different from, like, last year. Um, you could tell that those students stepped out of their comfort zones. There are students who said that they went somewhere for the first time without a friend. Um, they made new friends, they learned new skills, so very thankful for Operation Snowball. It was bittersweet because it was my last retreat as a parent, as I have a graduating senior, and it was my last, uh, retreat as a board member, as I'll be giving score in the village trustee with the village of Hazelcrest next Tuesday, so I just want to thank everyone here in the room for your partnership and serving everybody in the community. Um, but this isn't goodbye. We'll still be working together, so thank you all so much. So, I'm gonna stop the moon crying.
Uh, I want to give a shout-out to Matt Meany, uh, from Bremen, who helped me with a student who missed, uh, freshman orientation, and he went above and beyond to contact the student's family. And also a community member came up to me last week and just went on and on and on about how helpful he was at the, uh, dress sale that they had at Bremen from start to finish, loading and unloading, being there the whole time, and she just couldn't say enough about how much he went out of his way. So, thanks, Matt, for making us all look good.
Um, two things. I want to thank Ms. Morrison, Dr. Morrison, for that presentation. I know finance is not the most exciting topic, but it is a very important topic to the board. Um, as community members, we get questions, especially with the political climate and some of the decisions that are being made as to the impacts to our district. So it was important to me for us to, um, get that information as a board so that when we get questions, we're able to speak to the topic in an educated manner. So thank you very much for putting that effort and getting us the information that we need.
Excellent presentation.
Um, on another note, uh, that throughout the year, I've had the distinct honor of, kind of, of, um, participating in walkthroughs for each of the high schools. Um, I have not done so in some time, and I thought this year would be a great year to do it. Um, so I've visited all four campuses. I still have to visit Delta, so I hope to get to there before the end of the school year, if not, you're my first school on, um, the, the next school year. But, um, I, I really, I really commend the staff, the principals, the students. I'm just amazing. It's one thing to walk through the building, especially, you know, right, right now during a board meeting, but to actually be in the buildings while the students are there, while the activity's happening, it's really inspiring. Um, the students are so engaging, so polite, so respectful. The classrooms are definitely not the classrooms that I sat in as a student. Uh, almost maybe wish that I was in high school now versus back then. Uh, I really appreciate everyone's hospitality, the lunches. Um, where's, then Ms. Tate, Lee? Uh, Ms. Tate's, um, dissecting cat class. I went home and puffed my dog. Um, but there's something, there's something there when you get to watch it in action. It's really inspiring, and I, I am in awe, um, to everybody that makes it happen, um, during the daytime. So thank you very much for letting me into your building during the daytime and showing me such a great time. And, um, my hat's off. I left very proud of you and our district, so thank you very much. Any other board member reports?
All right, if there are no other board members, we're gonna go on to new business, item four. Ms. Mor- Dr. Morrison.
Item four point one is the bills, addendum to bills, payroll and CDS bills for April twenty twenty-five. These items are being recommended for full board approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point two is the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Athletico contract renewal. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Lot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point three is the fiscal year twenty twenty-six operating budget. This item is being recommended for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Mr. Wickham. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point four, Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Mrs. Ressler, four point four is the recommendation for a purchase, a two-year subscription of Subject.com as our new online credit recovery program at a cost of a hundred and thirty-two thousand a year. The superintendent is recommending the purchase of Subject.com for full board approval.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion?
Just, this is half of the program that it looks like. It's, I can't wait to see it in action.
Roll call, please. Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point five is the textbook adoption for twenty-five twenty-six. The Instructional Materials Review Committee, uh, met last month. It's comprised of teachers, parents, and administrators, reviewed books in the areas of mathematics, PE, which is our junior ROTC program, social studies, and world language. They have been on display at the Ad Center for the last thirty days, and these are being recommended to the full board for approval.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Ms. Motley, second by Ms. Lot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item four point six, Dr. Boswell.
Board, as we discussed last week, the superintendent is recommending the purchase of ten open-gauge weapons detectors via Buyboard from the manufacturer Cheya in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-eight dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Motley, second by, Mr. Wickham, I'm sorry. Uh, any questions? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
The second item agenda bor- uh, board is a two-year renewal with our security vendor Prudential Defense Solutions. This includes our security guards that work in our buildings every day. It's a, the same terms as our previous agreement, facilitates raises for staff that work in our buildings and allows options for the board should we need to terminate the contract should they not meet our needs. Superintendent is recommending the approval of this two-year renewal.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Item five, personnel recommendations. Mr. Toward?
Thank you, Mrs. Ressler. Uh, under retirement, Sherry Walsh. Under resignation, Ariana Langton, Ryan Bowling, Paul Vaez, Maria Ramirez, Janie Cardenas. Leave of absence, Sarah Sabatino. Under employment, Herb Offord, Josh Filino, Rachel Fuentes, Tisha Villa Gomez, William Griffin, and change in position, Juvenal Pimentel and Anise Bracy. Superintendent is recommending these items to the full board for approval.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Lot. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Ms. List?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Also, uh, the superintendent is recommending pay increases for administrators and non-union support staff for the amount discussed in closed session on April eighth, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gleason, second by Ms. Motley. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gleason?
Aye.
Mrs. Motley?
Aye.
Mrs. List?
Aye.
Ms. Lot?
Aye.
Ms. Sterns?
Aye.
Mr. Wickham?
Aye.
Mrs. Ressler?
Aye.
Moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No.
There are no public comments. Our announcements are as follow. Our next, uh, board meeting is our special board meeting, a reorganization meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, seven P.M. at Hillcrest High School. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Wickham, second by Ms. Gleason. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys. Have a wonderful evening.